So, good evening everybody and welcome to another Ask the Leader event with me Wayne Fitzgerald, leader of Peterborough City Council. Got quite a packed agenda tonight, lots of questions which is great because I like to hear from you and everybody else across the city about whatever it is you want to ask me or a member of the Cabinet team or indeed an officer of the council. And if you'd like to take part in a future event, all you need to do is just email asktheleader@peterborough.gov.uk. So this meeting is being recorded, it's a live Zoom meeting that will be replayed on our YouTube channel on the council. So this week we've tended to focus ahead of COP26 on a lot of climate questions and I'm sure there'll be many of those tonight. So the first question is going to be from Lizzie Denning. Lizzie, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, so mine's kind of a two-part question actually. It's regarding moving the football stadium to Peterborough Embankment, which is obviously public green space. I was wondering firstly kind of how that fits with Peterborough's policies around climate change. And also as someone who lives quite locally to there, I sort of have a more personal concern about flooding because I feel like that area in general does tend to flood and I can only imagine that will become worse if a lot of it is kind of concreted over.
Okay, may I first say to you, don't believe what you read in the paper. Okay, because the first thing to say to you, there is no planning application for what you've just described. There has been some talk and suggestion, so that's granted, that's in the public domain. But there is a long way to go before anything like that might happen. So I'll read out some stuff if I may, so just indulge me if you want to have a follow-up or ask any particular points of clarity, I'm happy to do that for you. So, given the site and size of that area and the amount of floor space to be created, I can confirm that any application in the future would be classed as a major development for which a site-specific flood risk assessment would be required. This must consider the flood risk both to the development but also demonstrate that the development would not pose an unacceptable risk of flooding elsewhere. This must all consider current flooding models, also consideration, I should say, and flooding models accounting for climate change. In addition, the development would be required to ensure that surface water generated would be dealt with by way of sustainable drainage systems, SUDs they're called by the way, which should be designed as far as is practicable to mimic the natural means of disposing of surface water as if the development was not there. It should also be noted that any applicant bringing forward a proposal for this site, not just for a football club or a stadium as being muted in the local press, would need to produce an environmental statement assessing the likely significant environmental effects that would be created. We have yet to formally scope what this needs to cover. In terms of the carbon emissions associated with the site, I can confirm that any application that comes forward would need to align with the council's local plan and requirements contained within it. The information we have so far indicates that the majority of any proposed development sits in an area that is not at risk of flooding from the riverine. However, the drainage strategy for any development on the embankment will be subject to the approval of the council as the lead local flood authority and the environment agency. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm just a bit surprised by that because I mean it did flood last winter, I couldn't access it because I run along there and it was flooded. So I find it odd that there's a report that kind of says it's not an area that floods.
Well, I think, you know, Lizzie, I'm not going to cross swords with you about what is deemed as flooding and what is not, you know, the river sometimes comes very high. But in all the time I've lived here, I've never seen the embankment flooded as in covered with water. And I'm talking about the entirety. You'll be aware of some of the development going on with the new university, largely on brownfield sites or parts of the embankment that have already been developed, perhaps car parks previously and the arena site. So all that stuff is going on. I'll give you a personal view, because I've stated a personal view. My personal view is, and I don't want to concrete the embankment over, but I'd like a sensitive redevelopment that encourages more use of the embankment and puts it to better use so that it can be used all year round for picnic-ing and events. And if that means an arena, that means an arena, but I can't give that permission. And I'm not making an application and neither is the council. Now, if the football club or somebody else wants to do that, they've got a lot of hoops to jump through. It's not a given and all the things to do with the land, the environment, climate, you know, the impact it would have, they would all be gone through with a fine tooth comb. And it doesn't mean in any way, shape or form that because somebody makes an application, it would be granted. I have a personal view, I know people have opposing views and that's what makes the world go round. So, you know, if it didn't pass muster, then it wouldn't go forward. So they've got a lot of hoops to get through if it did. But I don't think at the moment that the embankment perhaps is best used and you could look to many cities across the UK to see how they use their riverfront and their, you know, the water around them to make best use of, shall we say, you know, cultural dining, arts and leisure. So all those things I'd like to see developed, but not for concreting it over, but sensitively handled and keeping biodiversity, you know, all the wildlife intact and everything else. That's a personal view, others have different views. Happy with that? Or you got anything else?
No, that's funny. I mean, I can talk all night, but I'm aware.
By the way, so could I. It's a common fault of mine, but listen, thanks for coming on and it's not very often, you know, I get to speak directly to people. So just so you're clear, it's not, you know, it's not a given. There is no, you know, nothing been decided. It may not even happen because the people that are proposing what you asked me specifically about may not even put an application in because it's a lot of money just to do an application in the amount of work that they would have to do in order to satisfy the requirements of the council and, you know, the Environment Agency and other people. So let's see and wait what happens and if it comes, it comes and it will be dealt with accordingly. But listen, thanks for your question. I don't know whether Hannah, by the way, Hannah Swinburne is one of our climate change officers. I don't know, because Hannah, you're going to have a lot to say tonight. I don't know. Did I say anything wrong there? Have I got anything? Would you like to say anything from the climate perspective? Because I think that's where Lizzie was coming from.
Yeah, as councillor Fitzgerald said, we haven't had an application in for that specific site. And so further than that, it is difficult to comment on that one really.
Right, okay. Lizzie, by the way, stay on the line if you want to because there are lots of other climate questions as well that have come in in this last week. So you're welcome to stay and that would be the same as everyone else. So just for those tuning in, it is Ask the Leader with me, Wayne Fitzgerald, leader of Peterborough City Council. We're moving on to question two, which is from Yana. I don't know if she's on. I don't think we've got her yet. Have we got her soon in the, okay, so in which case, what we'll do, we'll come back to Yana if that's okay, if she joins us. So Mr Devonshire, Tim Devonshire, I hope you don't mind me calling you Tim or is it Mr Devonshire? You have a question.
You can call me Tim. Good evening councillor Fitzgerald, Wayne.
Wayne is fine, he's absolutely fine.
It's superb to see the leadership engaged with sustainability and environmental actions with a greater vigour and commitment. And to deliver a true sustainable and net zero carbon economy for Peterborough, we need to continue to look at our businesses and communities' energy supplies, transport systems and manage our spending, which I believe is arguably the root of all our emissions. I'd like to ask, will you consider or have you embedded a green team or sustainability experts into the purchasing and planning process for PCC? Are all of our purchasing decisions now reviewed by sustainability engineers? And we spend plenty of money on data science and I think it's now time to put the purse in the hands of a robust and diligent team of environmental experts, ensuring that every order, every contract as we step forward has an environmental review statement showing clearly but simply how the environmental impact of the purchasing decision was reviewed, amended or mitigated.
Right, okay. Thanks, Tim. Great to speak to you. Happy to engage. I'll give you I'll give you the formal speak first and happy to discuss in any other detail a follow-up or two. And perhaps our people in the transport, which is Lewis here and Hannah in climate, might be able to offer some more insight. But for all purchases over half a million pounds, 500,000, officers assess the associated carbon impact. We're currently changing the process. So shortly, not only will the impact of the council's carbon emissions be considered, the wider impact that our decisions have on community emissions will also be considered. The carbon impact assessment process ensures that offices identify areas of emissions that can be designed out of the project through altering the specification of products and services, changing the quantity of purchases or redesigning the project. This process is also followed for any key decision which affects more than one ward and is being introduced into our routine project planning. Carbon impact assessments are evaluated by the climate change team within the council. We've also got good examples of how we've used our procurement processes to reduce emissions already. For example, when we awarded the highways contract to Milestone, it was Skanska back then in 2013, we included several environmental key performance indicators, which has led to demonstrable carbon savings. For example, by 2021, the contracts saw carbon emissions reduced by 43% compared to a 2015 baseline. We're also looking into how to embed carbon into how we decide which supplier to award a procurement tender to because we need to ensure that this process is fair and has the correct prioritisation to ensure we all address all of our ambitions, valuing social and economic impacts too. Now, just for the benefit of everybody on the call, I can add my own views and things, but please be or rest assured that these statements that I read out by and large are produced by the professionals in the council in terms of, to answer you, because I'm not an expert about anything. You know, there are people that we employ that are experts, but I think, Tim, we take very seriously our responsibility. And I understand your concern and the concern of, you know, many people. It's got more important recently that we need to be mindful of everything we do and how it affects the planet, the carbon, the emissions and how we live our lives. So I think, you know, as politicians, we have to be aware of that, but we also have to be realistic about what we can do with the budgets we have, in all honesty. If you want to come back now, by all means, or I'll ask the officers to comment further on your question.
No, that was a great answer. I think it's very positive to hear you talking to Lizzie there about the stadium or the football club. And it's worth bearing in mind, you know, alongside the comments you made about producing thorough carbon emissions reports for large projects such as the Embankment Development, flood risk assessment and the use of SUDs. We do need to bear in mind also that we are a city that's fortunate to live in the countryside. And if we are going to spend a lot of money and get investment from overseas, outside of the city, et cetera, to build these infrastructure projects, one of the things that we really should demand is funding to come along with that to develop the countryside alongside the city because we do have a great river corridor. And as you were saying, when we build developments, we don't just drain them like we used to. We drain them in an environmentally sound and sometimes a way that benefits the local area more than previously. So yeah, thank you very much, Wayne, councillor Fitzgerald.
Great. You know, our rural interests, I agree, are completely as important. If you talk to some of our rural councillors, you know, councillor Over, councillor Allen as well, you know, that's got I Thornley Newborough, particularly in the farming community and other things, you know, they're also on board with these great environmental projects. I mean, I was out on our farms this day and you'd be amazed at the work that the farmers are doing, you know, to get involved in the climate change agenda and doing what they actually can to, you know, make farming sustainable. Absolutely fantastic stuff that's going in. That's just in our own farms, you know. I was privileged to go and go out and see them a few months ago. So I think we are aware of that wider, broader remit. And but as I say, I do temper what I say, Tim, with the fact that, you know, we don't, we we don't have a bottomless pot of money and we can only do what we can do within. And believe me, budgets are certainly challenging. I've made no secret of how stretched we are for finance. Hannah or Lewis, I don't know if you want to, you know, say anything particular about any of the climate stuff or indeed our transport, how that, you know, it's impacting on projects. I'd like to involve you if you can, but if you don't need to add anything, don't.
Just to add one thing is that we definitely are looking at how we can put in a process to embed carbon emissions into deciding which supplier we go with. We just need to make sure we do that in a way which is fair to our smaller local businesses and really gives them the opportunity to bid into tenders that some of the larger companies may have more ability to be able to complete carbon impact assessments and more knowledge in the area. So we just need to make sure it's done in a way which is fair and gives everyone a level playing field.
Lewis, anything from you in terms of transport planning perspective and public transport in particular perhaps?
Yeah, absolutely. So obviously we're very much engaged, you know, with that agenda from a transport perspective, especially obviously working with the combined authority and some of the opportunities there in terms of some of the expertise they're able to bring in, but also some of the funding as well. I was just going to touch on it as well as the, you know, certain experts, obviously the council have within our, you know, our organisation. You know, we are trying to, you know, write a series of training and awareness raising so that all council staff are fully engaged, you know, on this agenda.
Great, thanks Lewis. I hope that's gone some way to giving you some comfort, Tim, that, you know, some of the work that's going on in the background. And I also, of course, I'm the Deputy Mayor of the Combined Authority and, you know, the Baroness Brown, you know, climate report that's going through at the moment and has become, you know, quite a hot topic of late. It's fully immersed within the Combined Authority. We're signed up to, you know, all those principles as well. So we are across it from a county-wide perspective, you know, and I could take that wider as well. So, okay, Tim, thanks a lot. So I'll move on. I still don't see Yana come on. So why don't I move on to question number four, which I believe is Miriam Selick. Do you want to ask your question, Miriam?
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Miriam. I'm on Peterborough Youth Council's Environment Campaign Group and I know that transport in the UK creates a quarter of our greenhouse gas emissions. And on average, each petrol car emits 180 grams a year of CO2. Even electric cars still emit 60 grams. Bikes are a good alternative that should be encouraged in cities like ours, especially for young people who can't drive. So why aren't Peterborough cycle networks better maintained, e.g. safety markings and priorities at junctions and connectivity so we can easily get across town? And when will the temporary post-COVID extra cycle lanes be reinstated? Thanks.
Well, let me start with the last part of your question. They won't be. Because temporary cycle lanes are not the solution to our cycling and active travel infrastructure. They had a place, but, you know, I'm not going to reintroduce them because I've got better and bigger plans to improve the uptake of cycling across the city. I could talk a little bit more about that. Lewis can also answer your question, but again, in part, money is a problem, Miriam, to be honest, in terms of what we can and can't do and how much we, you know, maintenance and we have a very small budget to try and make it go far. But let me just give you some of the official response and we can perhaps duck into the other areas. Maybe Lewis can answer some as well. So as your statistics show, electric vehicles do have their part to play, but we do need to get more people cycling, which I entirely agree with because it's great for the environment and it's so good for people's health and wellbeing. The council has recently invested significant funding, half a million pounds to be fair, to upgrade the green wheel. And by the way, that's the envy of many an area across the country. We're developing and designing a new cycleway at Thorwood that will fix a missing link to our cycle network by connecting two residential areas to the Thorwood Business Park at the Ferry Meadows. We will also shortly be developing our local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. Miriam, that's something you need to be aware of. This plan will give us a list of prioritised routes where cycling and walking infrastructure should be targeted. We will then look for funding opportunities from the likes of the Department of Transport and the Combined Authority. We'll be going out to public consultation on this plan and I would encourage you and everyone to view the document and make any comments or suggestions that you see fit at the appropriate time. Again, returning to the cycle lanes or the temporary ones, unfortunately, they were not well-used. And I think we need better permanent schemes to boost cycling numbers, particularly into the city centre. So the plan, I mean, I'll give you my vision and I'd like to see, I think most of Thor Road is okay. You know, we could do something, but when we get to that pinch point on the bridge and Lewis is an expert on this, you know, we need something better. I'd like to see a bridge by the side of the bridge both ways. So we get in and out traffic that keeps cyclists and motorists completely separate and safe. That's where I'd like to go. I don't have a timescale at the moment because we're linking this piece of work because it's so important to what we call the station quarter redevelopment, which is the western side of the station as you come into town. So don't think it's a million miles away from being done, but it's not tomorrow. I would say that because we're working on a business case for that development. I was just successful in getting a substantial sum of money out of the Combined Authority to explore what the options are for the station quarter redevelopment. And part of that work would be about travel and sustainable travel that would link into that. I mean, we are blessed in Peterborough, I have to say, particularly through the townships, having lived here probably well since 1980, so it's some considerable time, that there is a great network of cycleways and, as I said, the green wheel. There are some spots like Crescent Bridge, but also I could equally cite Townbridge as just being, you know, as unsustainable as it is in terms of a safe route for cyclists. My wife cycles every day down, more or less every day down, out of road and across the bridge. So I know exactly and I've done the same myself for many, many years. And we tried to find a solution in the past for Townbridge, you know, at London Road. And that has been challenging and that challenge remains today. So what we've got at the moment is a kind of half and half, you know, solution which really isn't ideal and we should try to do better. And that's what I'm trying to do, but I don't want to put in, I don't want to put in things that people resent. And trust me, a lot of people resented the Crescent Bridge scheme because it didn't, you know, it was all all about cyclists, not about motorists. And I know in the hierarchy, we should give in terms of prioritisation. But we've got to find a solution that works for everybody and that will be accepted by everybody. So I am trying to do that, but I just can't do it tomorrow. Did you want to come back now, Miriam, or do you want to hear what Lewis has got to say?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's really important that we maintain those things about people being able to get from A to B within the city because obviously the green wheel is a great thing, but that's mainly about recreation. So from people to encourage cycle use, so people can get from their house to school or from their house to town is really important.
I honestly do think the majority can with ease, but there are some pinch points. I do agree with you and others on that. Lewis, do you want to come in and just give? From Lewis is the man that's in charge of all the transport things within the council in terms of buses and bikes and sustainable travel. Lewis, do you want to just give your two pennies worth?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So we've got the draft plan that's actually available on the website and looking to review that now against some technical advice that's come out from government around, you know, what new cycleways should look like. Because now painted cycle lanes on a road aren't really considered best practice and good enough to get more people cycling on bikes. So we're just reviewing that at the moment and yeah, as the leader said, going out to public consultation. So really just keen to hear from as many people as possible really, as to what routes are important from them, you know, where they see the issues and the pinch points. And then of course, if anybody has any solutions or suggested schemes, we always, you know, you know, like to hear feedback from residents, both cyclists and non-cyclists as well.
Yeah, will you consult with the Peterborough Youth Council so that we can add in our experience, please?
Listen, it's lewis.banks@peterborough.gov.uk. So your voice is equally as important as is the youth council, Miriam, but just feed directly into the officers or indeed go online. You'll find the consultation or just email Lewis, he'll send you a link to it. And, you know, everybody's view is important, but sometimes that is the difficult thing because the politicians and others have to take account of all viewpoints, both cyclists, pedestrians and indeed, you know, motorcar users and others. Everybody's voice is important. We can have similar discussions about buses, you know. I don't know if buses is on the agenda tonight, but you know, I did something with an electric bus the other day and Ken was there. It was great, you know, and they were off to COP26. But behind the scenes, what you probably don't know, you know, I'd like to introduce electric buses now into the city. But we don't have the infrastructure in place at the moment to be able to deliver with those buses. And Stagecoach, you know, they want to move their depot, for example. I don't think that's a secret. So we need to put in that infrastructure and get those buses in place as soon as we can. And that's something that I'm pushing for because they're all in Cambridge. They've got them in Cambridge, which I'm very envious of. But we, you know, we need electric buses here and I'm doing all I can as quick as I can to try and get those so to make public transport more sustainable and greener and cleaner, you know, which also includes all the sustainable, you know, travel as well. So active walking and cycling and all those, it is on the agenda. But again, seven days in a week and I'm working seven of them at the moment. And I've got a really stretched budget. Your point about signage and things like that, Miriam, it literally does come down to budget and safety. So things are done, you know, something's unsafe, it'll get fixed straight away. If something, you know, it's just, it just will be in a natural cycle. Okay, I hope that answers some of your points. I'd like to dwell even further. Welcome to Nick Harding, by the way, who's joined us online. I think, Nick, we did talk about the embankment already. So you may have missed that question, but stay just in case there's anything else that you might wish to give a planning perspective on because Nick is an expert in all matters planning within the council. So Miriam, thanks for your question and say hi to your mum. Question five, patiently waiting there is Dorothy Ball. Good evening Dorothy again. Do you want to ask your question? I think you're on mute at the moment, Dorothy. So just, I know, it's the phrase of the century, you're on mute.
Isn't it? Yeah. Mine's really about green spaces as well and getting local people involved in it during the pandemic and emerging from it. Lots of us are much more aware of the value of these green spaces. And also that various parts of the city and close around where I live, there is, it's quite denuded of trees and shrubbery and green spaces. But I'm also aware of the severe financial pressures the council has, which we've alluded to several times. So my question's really about how could the council encourage or enable or even incentivise local inhabitants to increase the biodiversity round where they live in their nearby areas, front gardens. There are, you know, road verges which have flattened completely and got nothing on them. I live next to some flats where there's huge areas and I have in the past planted things in there and then if I haven't done it completely officially, the council mowers come along and mow it all down. So it sort of has to go through a system. But I do think it's really important that if locals are involved, things are much more likely to get looked after and, you know, watered if necessary and valued and increase their sort of interest and pride in the area. So it's really, can the council do anything to help us use those barren areas round us more effectively?
You know, that's really a great question and I'd like to say personally, you know, that's the second time I've heard that word denuded today. second time I've heard that word denuded today, because I saw in my own ward and I was, I was really grateful and threatened that we're going to be planting some trees in, in parts that were denuded. And I thought, ah, that's really interesting. So I'm, I'm pleased to say that, you know, the council is pro planting. And the Queen's Green Canopy, the celebrations next year that we will, we will be taking part in. I'm pleased to say, you know, which involves planting more trees. But look, let me give you some of the stuff that I'll, I'll, I'll give you as the official response, Dorothy. And again, maybe we can pick up specific points. So we, we definitely want to see all improvements that, that you wish for. And there is substantial evidence that increased plant life also increases mental health and wellbeing.
Absolutely.
In, in, in the, in the areas to be planted, if, if the area to be planted is within private land and you own that, then I say, go for it, you know, and the same during everybody else. You'll have the council's backing for any planting that promotes pollinators and biodiversity particularly. Plant life, bug life, the RSPB and many other organisations that have several legalism guides on how to best plant new wildlife areas. I, I've worked with some of those people myself in the past. We'd also be happy to, to provide bespoke help. So as long as there are not too many requests. I don't want to get inundated with people. If the area to be planted is within Peterborough City Council's area, things get a little more complicated. So at the moment, we do not have a process in place to support residents like yourself who want to create new green spaces on a volunteering basis. But we're just in the process of fixing this as several residents are keen to transform spaces that the council just not, just not have the resources to do. So that's good news. That's good. There are larger organisations such as Pet Peterborough Environment City Trust or Peterborough Conservation, Conservation Volunteers, which have authorisation from us to help improve green spaces. For the immediate future, I can recommend any interested residents to join such an organisation on a voluntary basis if they wish to improve the green areas in the city. So that's some official lines from the council, Dorothy. I, I hope that gives you some comfort that we're, we're behind you. Like all these things, there's always a bit of red tape, but it's always worth asking the question. And, you know, you're, it, it's great that you're involved in this and you feel passionate about it. And, and I, and I too wish I could do more.
So if I want to do these areas which are, which are council owned actually, next to me, who do I approach so that it can sort of get done and accepted, if you like? And, and the, the people who come around and mow know that that's okay.
I think it's a question, I think it's a question of just liaising with Aragon. What I'll do, there are several people on the call here that can make a note for you. So Sue is in my office. She'll make a note to talk to your issue and she'll talk to you about where you live, Dorothy. And we'll make sure Aragon have a conversation with you personally about what it is you're trying to achieve. I mean, I don't want you doing it across the city. I think it's a bit, it's a bit much to ask of you.
I, I think it needs to be done to the local bit because then you'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
If you're doing it all across the city, you lose that.
I'd be great if you could do it for all the parts for us. We'd be very grateful. I think you've been doing it for a very long time.
I don't have time.
No, exactly. So, so look, the office will make a note and come back to you about how you can liaise with your particular circumstance and, and, and see how we can, how we can help improve your life a little bit.
Just the final other part of it really was, how can we advertise? Because I can do, as one person can do something, how can we encourage others in a more general way to, to, to do something that changes?
Join one of the groups that I suggested to.
Well, I am a member of those. How does that help?
Well, I, I would say they have, they have more of a network with people like you.
Okay.
To pollinate the message.
And get, and get the word around. Okay.
Exactly. You know, there are many neighbourhood groups and parish councils and other networks that you can use to spread the word about what is possible. And I, I, I would suggest you do that. I'd just like to bring Nick in here because, you know, we develop plans and policies about biodiversity and all these other things. Nick, do you want to add anything about, you know, future planning policy? Particularly in view of the climate change agenda and biodiversity and, and how planning might be affected by those kinds of things in terms of policy?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. So under government policy, we're rolling out when making decisions on planning applications, we're getting developers to demonstrate biodiversity net gains. And, you know, we're reasonably sort of flexible, flexible and practical as to how that might be achieved. So I think as been mentioned already, you know, traditionally the open spaces have partly been provided as simply mown grass. And instead of those, yeah, there's the opportunity for, you know, flower rich planting to be put in instead of just straight grass. I think the tide is on the turn in terms of public attitude because, you know, in, in my twelve or so years at Peterborough, when we've tried that previously, the people moving into those new developments were unhappy that they were looking out onto what they perceived to be an unkept piece of land. And we kept trying to explain to them, no, that's wildflower meadow that's been deliberately planted, that doesn't get mowed very often, so on and so forth. And, you know, we've got specific areas, tracks through those areas for people to walk and so on and so forth. So, you know, we're doing our part from the sort of planning decision point of view to help improve biodiversity.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. I don't know, Hannah, do you want to say anything from a climate change perspective about, you know, the, the points Dorothy's raised tonight?
And I don't think there's much to add apart from, we've been successful in receiving funding for the delivery of three thousand trees we planted this winter. And so that's some really good news to say across the city. So hopefully some of those areas that you've noticed, which don't have much wildlife and, and much green space, you might get to, might matter notes a difference soon.
They have a thin tree canopy. Right. Well, we're trying to do our best. So Dorothy, I hope that goes some way to answering your question. Well, I hope we answered it properly, but thanks for coming on. I do appreciate it. And we, we are, we are doing our best. So you are listening to Ask the Leader with me, Wayne Fitzgerald. I'm the leader of Peterborough City Council. And if you've got a question for me, all you need to do is email asktheleader@peterborough.gov.uk. Couple of questions to go. And I'd just like to say good evening to our Member of Parliament for Peterborough, Paul Bristow has joined us online because there is a question, the final question where Paul might be required to give some input to an answer. But sticking with the running order, I think it's Mazamile next. So in terms of, would you like to ask your question, Mazamile, tonight? And you're also from the youth council as well.
Yeah, I'm also from the youth council. Good evening, councillor.
Yeah, good.
So my question was about jobs for young people and it's, you know, to do with this government net zero carbon strategy, the, the floating number is four hundred and forty thousand jobs. So how will this help young people in Peterborough, including people who are just entering the job market? As I'm turning eighteen soon, so I wanted to ask these four people who are entering the job market and looking for jobs.
Do you know, I'm so jealous of you. You're, you're just starting out on, on, on your journey. Look at me, I'm, you know, I'm auditioning for Santa Claus, I think, as we, as we get closer to Christmas. So good luck to you. And again, a great pleasure for you to be on, you know, taking an active part. So let me just read, read you our official speech. Again, as you refer to government, I mean, Paul might want to come in in, in a moment about what he thinks about, you know, because he's the man setting policy in parliament. So in order to deliver a net zero future, we will need to swap our gas boilers, for example, for low carbon heating systems, our combustion engines for electric vehicles and upgrade the energy efficiency in our homes. Not only will this require skilled people to produce, install and maintain all of these technologies locally, but we'll also need people designing low carbon products and systems who can also consider the lifespan of the products we use and the circular economy. So we maximise the use of our waste products as more and more companies adopt carbon neutral targets. The designing low carbon products and services will be widespread across the industry. So to support this transition locally, the new university, which is opening in Peterborough in September, will offer courses with a strong focus on the environment. And that's really good news. I, I believe as a city, you know, we are a strong environmental city. There was an article in the Sunday Times quite recently, you know, that puts Peterborough with more photovoltaic panels than anywhere else, more electric cars than anywhere else. We are doing, doing so much here in the city to promote, you know, a green, cleaner future of which, you know, we can all live. So I think there are plenty of opportunities for you and others like you, Mazamile, in, in, in terms of jobs for young people in Peterborough. And if you widen that out to the nation as a whole, there have been, there are more jobs at the moment than, you know, we can find people to fill them. And the same is also true in Peterborough. Paul, as you are early, I think you heard Mazamile's question because in parliament it is you and your colleagues that are setting the agenda in terms of the things that are happening. Do, do you want to answer anything specifically before we move on to the final question about jobs for young people? And, and net zero carbon, carbon strategy?
Um, yeah, I'd be delighted to do, Wayne. Do so, Wayne. Forgive me because our signal's not great. And I'm joining this, you know, from a hotel prior to an event I'm going, I'm going to this evening. But I just wanted to just say that I, I, I think something very special is going to happen next year in Peterborough. And that is the, the opening of that, that university. And as Wayne said, because that's a STEM university that's focused on science, technology, engineering, manufacturing, that is going to be a very specialist place. And I'm told by people who are far more intelligent than me that this is going to ensure that we're going to get new manufacturing companies, new companies in Peterborough. And they're going to focus on some of the new green technologies. I'd watch this space, my friend, tomorrow. Because we may, we may be, we may have some good news tomorrow about Peterborough and the levelling up fund and the next stage that you first. But that's going to transform health, wealth and opportunity in this city. Highly paid jobs in the green sector. And as that research comes to the city, makes sense, doesn't it? That if we've got the research, H G students there, other companies are going to want to come speak. And they're going to want to build factories near that university, near where that expertise is, near where that PhD, the PhD students are. So they can find the next big green thing. It's going to transform the city. It's going to transform the way that we generate power and where we accelerate towards a carbon neutral future. The brotherhood in, in the company in this city and their building, hopefully, fingers crossed, the next generation of reactors to help Rolls Royce and to help companies like that develop new nuclear vision and, and ensure that we are able to generate power, moving away from coal, moving away from gas.
We've lost you, Paul, a little bit. While your signal recovers, Paul, I'll go. Mazamile, do you want to ask anything else, Mazamile? We've, we've lost you a bit, Paul. Mazamile, do you want to come back in? Oh, you stay there, Paul. Stay there. We lost you a bit. Stay there. Mazamile, do you want to come back in?
I don't have anything to say much, but I know that I live right beside the university as it's constructing. I live in Eastgate, which is right up there.
Yeah, you're seeing it rise then, yeah.
Yeah, I hope to see what our MP is talking about, which is the STEM based university grow and develop. And then we can see the jobs come from there. Yeah.
I think it's going to be fantastic. You know, it's great news for the city. And I've got high hopes that, you know, instead of losing all the good talent that lives here, they'll be able to, you know, go to uni here, stay at home, thrive in the city and get a good education and learn some skills. And I, I think it's going to be a fantastic place. And I, I can't wait to see, you know, the university open next September and grow over the, over the coming years and, and, and offer more of the practical stuff that, you know, young people like you, Mazamile, clearly want to get involved with. And it's really great that you've come on tonight. And I thank you for, again, for taking part. So we will move to the final question, which does require an answer from Paul, which I asked him to join us tonight. But it's, 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 it's from a, it's from a lady called, I think it's Anna, Anna Bunton, who's not here. But Ken, do you want to ask the question for Anna? So we, we can, we can give her a response to it. Yep.
Uh, yeah, sure. So Anna asks, so are you and your colleagues on the council prepared to make the bold decisions needed to truly be an environment city? And she goes on to ask this might be for once, Mr Bristow. Are, are our MPs lobbying Westminster for the necessary funds in order to achieve this?
I think before I give any answer, and as Paul has got a bit of a ropey signal, we'll, we'll, we'll take in Paul's point first. Paul, what, what, what are, what are you doing in Westminster to get us the funds or to put Peterborough right in front of the relevant ministers and to make us more of an environmental city, Paul?
Well, a big part of my job is lobbying for Peterborough and I do that with varying degrees of success. And, and I, I always seem to be asking for, for more money for Peterborough. And I think sometimes the Treasury get a bit sick of me because that's, you know, I'm quite honestly, I ask that question a lot. Look tomorrow, I think we might have some good news tomorrow in terms of the levelling up fund. And that's more money for Peterborough, more money to build that university, more money for us then to build those green technologies of the future. One of the first questions I ever asked Wayne, when I became a Member of Parliament, was after being lobbied by Nicola Day, actually, he's a green councillor in Peterborough. And it was entirely, it was because, it was for that purpose entirely. It was actually lobbying for support from government to, to, for more resources for Peterborough to do the things that we need to do in order to become carbon neutral and make those sort of bold, bold decisions. We've, we were partially successful. We got some extra money for Peterborough. But we get extra money all the time from, from government for various different things. What's, sometimes what government do, does, which is not always helpful, and I'm sure Wayne would agree, it ring fences many various different things. And, and so there'll be extra money for, say, dealing with rough sleeping. There'll be extra money for dealing with some of our, our climate crisis. But it will be ring fenced for those things. That comes with pluses and it comes with negatives. The pluses are that you obviously can address some of those issues that are concerned. But the negatives are there may be something more pressing, you know, that the council wishes to spend their money on, but they can't because it's ring fenced. So there's pluses and there's negatives. But as far as I'm concerned, this is my job. It's to try and, I'm not, I'm not Westminster's representative in Peterborough. I'm Peterborough's representative in Westminster. And that's why I, I, I consider that the first and most important thing that I do as a Member of Parliament and always will.
Okay, Paul, thanks. Listen, if you want to scoot off to your engagement, that's absolutely fine. We won't mind. I shall give the, the remainder of the answer to, to Anna, which is, I, I've no doubt about the scale of the challenge that lies ahead of us. No doubt about the scale of the decisions that will be needed to achieve net zero. It will, will require politicians to work across political divides. And it will require the residents and businesses of the city to help shape the changes that are needed. Many of the decisions will require us to fundamentally change how we do things on a day to day basis. But I'm also confident that many of those things will have multiple benefits. Ie cycling is good for the environment and our health, as we've already spoken about. The Combined Authority established an independent committee, commission on climate change to take a look at what Cambridgeshire and Peterborough need to do to become a net zero region. As a member of the Combined Authority Board, I voted personally to approve the recommendation that the commission presented in their initial report, which was published in March this year. This was an ambitious list of proposals and targets that covered reducing emissions across transport, buildings, energy and peatlands. The level, this level of ambition carries across my, to my approach here at Peterborough City Council, where we are committed to tackling climate change and set ourselves the ambitious challenge of becoming a net zero organisation by 2030, well ahead of many around us. And this is helping Peterborough. And this is helping Peterborough to become a net zero city by the same year. We've already heard from our MP, Paul Bristow, about the work he's doing, um, in parliament in Westminster. So Anna, I hope that goes, uh, some way to answering your question. Um, and it only remains for me to say, um, thank you all, uh, for taking part, for sending in your questions. Thanks to all the officers, uh, for, uh, their time tonight, uh, many who haven't even eaten yet. So, uh, I hope you found it interesting. And if you, or you're welcome to come back, not too, not too often though, in the sense of, we'd like to give a fair share of opportunities to people, but anytime really you've got something you want to ask, all you need to do is email asktheleader@peterborough.gov.uk. That is asktheleader@peterborough.gov.uk. Uh, and the team will organise, uh, perhaps for a future event for you to, uh, come on and ask a question with support from officers and other members as, as needed. So again, I'll just bid you good night and say thank you, uh, again for your time and for joining in tonight. Uh, and we'll leave it there for now.
Thank you.